It's Wednesday, May 13, 2020. Let me read the following pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 3818, and Governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Southwick Soccer Board and Finance Committee is being conducted both at Town Hall and via remote participation by some or all members. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. Despite our best efforts, if we are not able to provide for real-time access via Zoom conference call platform, we will post the recording of the meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. My name is Russell Fox. I'm Chairman of the Select Board. We also have with us Vice Chairman of the Select Board Doug Mogulyn, Joe Didi, Member of the Select Board, Chief Administrative Officer Carl J. Steinhardt. We have members of the Finance Committee, Chairman of the Finance Committee, Robert Horacek, Vice Chairman. Has she joined us?
No, no, won't be here tonight.
Okay, we have Sheila Chamberlain, a Member of the Finance Committee, Terry Mish, Member of the Finance Committee, Art Pennell, Member of the Finance Committee, Carrie Doherty, Member of the Finance Committee, Karen De Mayo, Member of the Finance Committee. Is Laura Fleischer here? Yes, she is. Laura Fleischer, Town Accountant, Melinda Wingate, Assistant Town Accountant. Have I mentioned everybody?
Everybody that's on the board.
Okay, all right, I've talked to Chairman Horacek this afternoon, and we're going to try to accomplish three things tonight. The first is we're going to discuss and hopefully reconcile the fiscal '21 budget for the Town of Southwick. From there, we're going to be discussing potential bond issues, and from there, we're going to go into discussions of the special town meeting and the annual town meeting. I'm going to attempt, if it's all right with you Chairman Horacek, to go through the proposed budget fairly quickly, only going to places where we have a difference. If anyone has a question and would like to stop at a certain page, feel free to jump in. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Yes.
Okay, then Laura, we're going to start on page one. Is there any issue on page one of the proposed budget?
No.
Okay, we're going to page two.
Okay, on page, whoops. Page two, no.
Okay, we're going to page three.
How do you want to approach some additional requests from the TCC office? That are highlighted in blue, do you want to do it as we're on the page?
Yes, it could probably be the best thing. And we also have Town Clerk, Treasure Collector Michelle Hill has just joined the meeting, and good timing because we're at the part-time clerical additional requests. This is certainly something that's been favored by the Select Board. Mr. Horacek, Finance Committee's opinion?
I'm sorry?
The Finance Committee's opinion on the part-time clerical additional requests from Michelle Hill.
I believe we tabled that to discuss that with you because that is in your purview as the employment Personnel Board.
Michelle, would you give us the very brief reason for this?
The elections is the big part of it. Obviously, we have changes. I haven't been through them yet until next week and in June. But with the primary, they're talking about, there's a bill out there, perhaps having early voting in person for an entire week as well. So there's a lot of preparation that goes into all that. And given the nature of all these line extensions, we need the additional help with that.
Any questions or concerns? If not, I'm going to say that we both approve this. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that would be the same for the overtime request. Any questions or concerns? I see a lot of heads shaking yes, so I'm going to assume that that's approved also. Okay, Laura, we're going on to page four.
There was one other difference on page three.
Okay.
And that was the legal ads.
Carl, you want to explain that one?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think when we looked at it as a board and the way it was trending, we needed, and the fact that we've done a couple of years worth of Finance Committee Reserve Quests, we just felt that, you know, one year is an aberration, but as you go along and you start to encounter it repeatedly, that we needed to possibly deal with the issue or raise it in this discussion, in this forum, and then decide that if we wanted to just leave it alone, we could just be of the agreement that if we needed to come back for anything during the fiscal year, that everybody would know that this is discussed. I mean, we are obligated when we do public hearings and licensing hearings to do legal ads. We are required to get notice, we're required to do bidding documents, and all of those things, you know, we do use free types of forums when we can, but we do have to follow. Obviously, some of that involves legal ads, especially posting different things from town meetings and things of that nature. So it's just one of those things where we track. And then, of course, certain types of job postings where we have to go and pay through the MMA and in places like that, professional association postings.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that the Finance Committee increase their budget number from $8,500 to $10,000. That's Terry Mish making that request.
Second, Art.
I don't know if we need a vote, formal vote, Mr. Chairman. I think if it's just a consensus that we all agree on the $10,000, that's fine.
Yeah, I think this is going to be more of a work session where it's just consensus. And then at subsequent meetings, when you're in your full posted meetings, you'll take formal votes to adopt the budget package.
So Mr. Mish has made a suggestion. Is that agreeable to everybody?
So it's not a motion, right?
We don't need a motion.
Okay, all right, it's not a motion.
If anybody has a problem with it, speak now. I hear nobody. We're going to page four. Go ahead, Laura.
So page four, we have an additional request for poll workers, $10,000.
I think that's self-explanatory because of all the elections. I don't think Michelle needs to add anything to that. Anybody disagree?
No.
Hearing none. Next one, Laura.
Additional please for $1,800.
I mean, if we've agreed to the same numbers, why don't we just keep moving on?
Right, sounds good. Good suggestion, Mr. Mish. Laura, just go to ones where we have a disagreement then.
Okay, well, I just don't know if you guys have, each board has discussed these additional increases.
Okay, we'll do it this way. If anybody has a disagreement with any of the things in blue, speak now.
Russ, when we're done with the whole thing, we're just going to cut the budget 5% anyways, right? So it won't matter.
Mr. Didi, I was holding out for the end.
Okay, I want to get in front of that. All right, go ahead. Thank you.
Page four is done. We're going on to page five.
Nothing on page five.
Page six.
Page six is the monitors.
Mr. Mogulyn, would you want to address that?
I think this is part of the, there are some monitors through Town Hall that are getting to be quite old, and they were scheduled for replacement. So we just brought some budget forward to bring that through.
We've been very fortunate. Doug has been very helpful with doing a lot of the technical work for our board to make sure the Town Hall and other buildings in town are up to date. So thank you, Doug.
No worries. So I think part of the lesson learned here is part of the regular PC upgrade process that they're going to have through Town Hall that they've always had, but they're going to look at using laptops instead of desktop PCs for this, especially with the wireless rollout that's going on, and then the ability for employees to work remotely if they need to. Laptops are obviously well better suited to that. So some of the monitors that we have in Town Hall, that would be when those PCs are replaced with a laptop, they'll still need a monitor for day-to-day use, and the newer monitors will be able to plug into the laptops.
And that's exactly what I do, Doug. I have the laptop, and it allows everybody the flexibility to bring the unit home and be remote. Our current operating conditions has been a very, very good situation for myself, and I could just see that if we end up going into the fall and in the winter and we have another outbreak of something like this and have to go into another, you know, shutdown operation or scale back, we're going to need these types of tools.
Any questions on that?
No.
Okay, assessor software upgrade, I think that's a really, to us, it's a no-brainer. Those are the people that bring in the money, that run our community, and that software is needed to comply with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Any questions or problems?
Nope.
Network printer, I think Doug, you've already said, kind of explained that. So if there's no questions, we're going on to page seven.
I have, I got a quick, wait. On that assessor, I was just checking, is that... I know they had a few of the things that were not top priority.
That was a, I didn't, I'm sorry, Terry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but that was a top priority. It's something required by the Department of Revenue.
Okay, got it.
Okay, we're back on page seven. Laura, anything?
No, the only thing is to take out the old library maintenance.
Okay, any problems?
No, that's good.
Budgets balanced, we can all go home now. It's $1,200 bucks in our favor.
All right, we're moving on to page.
The postage, additional postage.
Yeah, and I think that was in the event that the state was going to possibly require done by mail completely. So I think what we could do was, this was probably another one of Michelle's requests. This one, we could probably hold off on if there's consensus that if that comes about, we could do a FinCom transfer at a later date.
What's your pleasure, Mr. Chairman?
I think a reserve fund transfer is fine.
Yeah, not only that, Bob, there might be one of those things where, and be mandated, that might be something that the state would actually give us money for.
Speaking of that, Mr. Steinhardt, are there any other opportunities for reimbursement through Michelle Hill's operations? Previously, we had voting procedure changes, and the state later reimbursed it for some of the expenses. Have we identified any other opportunities like that with all of these changes that we're looking at?
That is part of those bills, and she is trying to pursue those items. He can give you an idea how those funds have come in and been used.
Mr. Mogulyn, you're going to have to control your cat. Its tail gets into the screen occasionally.
He's on my budget, too.
Anything else on page seven?
I guess the Finance had tabled some of the stuff where it says tabled to talk to the Select Board.
Okay. Mr. Horacek, you want to lead the discussion on that?
Yeah, I mean, we tabled all of the ADA code violations because we weren't sure that we had to do them this year. And the machinery, concrete coating repairs, boiler replacement, window gaskets, and weather stripping, could some of those be pushed off until next year?
Yes, they could, Mr. Chairman. And I think the important, and in terms of the ADA code report, the town did receive a grant that we applied through the state late last year for about $18,000, and we hired a vendor. And we expect that report in the next couple of weeks. And obviously, it's going to give us food for thought going forward in the future. It's something that was required to be an attachment to the Open Space Plan update. It's something we have to have in place so that we can, in future community development block grant applications, put in the Town Hall elevator in there. So there's many reasons why we have to have this done, and it's going to give us quite a few recommendations on what we have to do from an ADA point of view going forward with annual dollars being spent. But I think in the current climate, that everybody is scaling back spending, and this is going to be those types of things that's going to have to be deferred for later action.
I'd only add that these were items that were pointed out by the tie-in bond study, and there was quite a list, and these were some of the things that they had said that we should probably address first, but there wasn't a timetable.
Right, and Mr. Chairman, the number one item that we're still addressing is the fire station project because we recently, you know, we continue to have leaks over there, that this rainstorm is what we've been having. The fire chief has been periodically sending the water in the building. So that's going to be the priority, and these other things are just going to have to be tabled. So I agree with the Finance Committee.
Bob, you want to poll your Finance Committee?
Relative to?
Those tabled items.
Those tabled items? Did your board approve that?
No, we zeroed them all out.
We zeroed them all out.
Okay, all right, that was, I think that's where we were headed. That's where I was headed.
Sheila's shaking, yes.
Arthur's giving the okay.
Okay.
Karen giving us the answer.
Yep.
Okay, we got her answer.
We're good.
All right.
We're in agreement.
Then we're going to page eight.
And this is also another section that you differed on the request for the different positions on the police.
What we voted on, the Finance Committee voted on was to give them a set number for the chief to decide on that $24,000, which you guys approved $24,000. So actually, it looks like we probably agree.
I believe that was our intention. Any other discussion on that?
We're in agreement.
So both boards are going to leave it up to the police chief to decide where to spend that $24,000?
Correct.
Right.
I thought the Select Board's position was just on the reserves.
Yeah.
That's the way it's written.
And then, that's what the chief wants, that's what we'll give him.
Okay, I think Carl is correct, that ours was just on the reserves. We felt that was the most important issue, to get those people up and trained. It would help us alleviate overtime situations and to make sure we had local people to work the details in town.
Okay, so your position remains the same? You're supporting only the reserve training?
I think that's, and Doug or Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, is that what we said?
Yeah, that was the gist of it. We went round and round and ended up really at the reserves. That's, one was more or less a new position or a bump in the position, the corporal, and then the others, additional 10 hours, that fell under what?
Records clerk.
Records clerk.
Records clerk, right. Additional hours under community policing, so. We just said, here you go, get the records up and running, and then we'll look at it again next year.
Yeah, our reserve corps is very low. That was the priority here. That's why we just put those five new people on. They've all passed their physicals, they're all ready to go. It's just a matter of slowly, you know, bringing in one or two at a time and bringing them onboard.
I have no problem with the money just going to that line item.
All right. Poll your members?
No.
I see some shaking to heads. Okay, okay.
Okay.
Then that'll just be a good catch, Laura.
Okay. So is that going to be for the even $24,000 or the $23,448 he asked for?
All right, I don't see anything else on that page. Can we go to page nine?
Page nine is the shotgun and the rifle.
The Police Department has asked for this for a while now. I have no issue with putting that into the budget.
The rest of your Finance Committee members?
Does anybody object to that?
Okay. All right, so we're going to agree on those two items.
Right.
And the next one was the full-time communications center supervisor. We felt that, going along with everything else we said, no new positions other than the ones that we'd already agreed to, and that would be in the Fire Department. So I see you tabled that, Bob.
Right, we tabled that, again, deferring to the Personnel Board.
You got it.
So I'm going to go along with your board on that. Does anybody have any objections to that?
I see none.
Hearing none?
Right. We'll go down to fire, then, additional hours. I think the Fire Chief and Deputy Fire Chief have made a good case for the additional hours. Now that we're gone to a new type of paramedic level, there's additional information that has to be gathered for the billing, and we felt that it was necessary, since Russ is doing such a great job getting additional grant funding, we'd kind of like to make sure he has an opportunity to keep doing that and not let him get tied up with this new billing system.
And that number dropped, did it not? That went down to $63,95?
That's what I got.
Yeah, right. Okay, I don't have an issue with that.
Makes sense.
Mr. Chairman,
Yes, sir.
With all due respect for our Fire Department and EMS and all their good efforts, I just want to bring to the table tonight that our member who's not here tonight raised the point strongly last, at our last meeting, that she recalls distinctly being promised when the clerical position was eliminated, she was told in no uncertain terms that they wouldn't be coming looking for that to be restored in the near future. Now, I'm just raising that issue because she raised a valid point. I understand that things change on the ground. Mr. Fox's explanation is wonderful, but I just wanted to raise that point. I guess we should never say never. Maybe that's the lesson.
One I've had to learn on more than one occasion.
Yes, right, okay.
Very good point, Art, very good point.
That was a full-time position that was eliminated, was it not?
Correct.
This is not a full-time position.
No, it's not.
Yeah, yeah, never say never.
Didn't say never.
Give it 365 days.
Oh, come on, keep going.
All right, so can we move on?
Yes.
Yes.
Page 10. It looks like everything's okay. Page 11.
Looks like we're in agreement on that page as well, isn't it?
Well, it looks like.
I'm sorry, I was on page 10, trying to work it off my phone.
It looks like you have a couple of tabled items, and you have some monies under, and I wish I had a ruler. I'm not sure which line item is in for $16,500.
Yeah, that stands for, that stands for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing type stuff.
We were looking for an additional explanation by the Select Board.
Yeah, we actually, as a group, yourselves and the board and myself, last year, when we did the year-end transfers to the Fire Department, we transferred similar dollars to this under, if you look above it, where it says $13,000, Fire, AC, Repair, Heat. Those dollars, the Fire Chief still has to address things, so I would be good with that number being eliminated at this point in time. This, again, is additional stuff that comes out of the tie-in bond report for each building, and that's why we had, you know, when we went through the budget process, I had asked them, the architect, to give us the top several things for each building so that you, as decision-makers, would know that if we wanted to undertake these things, we could do that. In light of the funds not being available, then we just defer them.
So action is not imminent.
Right, right, it would not be needed, and there are other dollars that could accommodate that issue, Mr.
All right, moving on. The only other item I see is we're disagreeing on $50 for sealer supplies.
We didn't know what it was, really, so.
The sticker that goes on your gas pump and on your weights and measures. Westfield has taken over doing our weights and measure stuff, and we have to have our own sticker that says Southwick Seal. So those go on your gas station pumps, calibers, scales, that kind of stuff.
Fine, problem?
No issues.
No issues. We agree on that one.
Yep.
All right, we're going to page 12.
I think we're good.
One second, Carl, on the building inspector's salary, now that that position has an agreement in principle, are you okay with the number?
The number is going to be, again, $69,900 is what we've negotiated with him. And again, that's on an annual basis, so if Laura's got to calculate 261, 262, 263 payroll, then that's the thing that ends up changing that.
But, so you're close enough to carry this forward? It doesn't need to go up by thousands or lower by thousands?
No, no, that number there is right in the ballpark right now, so.
All right, that's good enough then.
Yep.
Okay, so we're back on page 12. I don't see anything. We're moving on to page 13.
I was on 13 already.
Okay. Uh, let's see, the first thing I see is canal, brook, beaver dam, and log removal.
There's also security cameras.
I think they had the $5,000 twice, right? Once is, I think that was the question out of the finance committee, right?
Well, they, they had two, there was two different, I think there was 5,000 in one and maybe 10 in another, because I think this 5,000 was from when the water, when the water leaves the lake on the southern part before the canal locks. Like, if you've been down the rail trail, you've seen the wear gates, and this is for the area up to the wear gates, and then the other dollar amount was the area after the wear gates up to the town line along the canal. So it's more of a priority.
So how have we addressed this issue in the past?
I don't know if they've addressed it or if they've used volunteers going down there, but these things do require permits because you are doing things in wetlands, and you have to have also the appropriate licensed people to do it.
Volunteers would be a lot less expensive, probably.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe not.
I think some of the volunteers that worked in the past are no longer with us, are, and one of them had access to heavy equipment. So that might be one of the determining factors.
Just a one time, this will be, this will become an annual line item, I'm sure, right?
Well.
Beavers do come back as a rule.
Right, and they, I mean, lake management could tell you, they work with conservation and things like that to try to eradicate or move the problem. But, you know, let's, let's face it, we just made a huge investment in Congamon Lakes. This is a problem. If that water backs up, it brings the nutrients back. So I think it.
What I could do, what I could do, Mr. Chairman, is see whether or not that 5,000, whether or not we could maybe possibly lower the consultant for lake assessment permitting, because we just, we'll be paying him over 40,000 to have finished the alum treatment stuff.
Okay.
He also helped out with the, some of the annual lake treatments for the invasive weeds. Because don't forget, that, that treatment we just did, which is complete now, just about, that was dealing with the alum and so forth. There's the other issues where we're still doing spot treatments for the Eurasian milfoil, so I will check with LMCC to see if the, the 5,000 here could in fact be taken from the 15, and I don't want to touch the, and, and we used to have to use some of the other monies for algae blooms, so we're not anticipating having any more of those after $720,000 worth of work. So I will be checking that, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
All right, so I don't see anything else.
The security cameras.
I'm sorry?
Replacement of the security cameras. It was above the beaver dam.
Okay. We.
Hundred.
Right, our, our position was that, uh, they, we were kind of hoping we could hold off for a year. A lot of times they're adding additional cameras, but some of these cameras have a longer shelf life, and we were just going to kind of put it off for a year.
I think that's a good idea.
So it was written, so it shall be done.
All right.
Um, I would like to.
Did you knock down the five, or did you leave the five in?
1,500, right?
I, I left.
Back to the beaver dams.
We left that in, but I'm going to go and talk to the, the lake management chairman tomorrow about the offsetting of the other 15 above it. So we may end up changing that.
If we can't change it, Bob, is there a, a big disagreement on that one?
Well, that's what I want to make sure that we, we had agreement before we moved on.
Very good.
I, I don't have an issue with it.
Okay. No problem. Now that we're still on page 13, let's take an opportunity to talk about the gas. The bids were being opened up today through the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative that we are a member of a large, that they do the purchasing for all the cities and towns around us and, as well as ourselves, so they are trying to secure three-year deals on gasoline and diesel. So I just want everybody's, you know, consensus there that if I can lower this number, I'd like to have your support to do that after I get the bid results.
I don't think you have any arguments on that one, Mrs. Steinberg.
Okay, so there's a latitude on that, good.
All right, going to page 14. Anything?
Page 14 is the paving.
That's where you're going to do it.
Okay. You want, you want to save that to the end when we go over the bond issues?
Okay.
Is that good?
That you want, sure.
All right, we'll put that on hold. All right, going to page 15 then. I guess the only thing here is pertaining to stormwater.
Right.
Okay. The board, the select board looked at this, and I think you obviously know that we've held meetings with elected officials and appointed officials on a federal and state level. You know our opinion on this. You feel it's an unfunded mandate, yet we agreed to continue to try to do certain things. They agreed to work with the town of Southwick verbally. So this is kind of a goodwill gesture that we're continuing to put monies there to continue that, that process.
I think it's too much money. Maybe half of that would feel better. That'd be a good sign for the folks, that we're still, we're still working with them.
I think, Carl, one of our objectives was to make sure that we have an excellent individual who is working for us right now, possibly an individual that will be with the town in another position in the future. And this would help to keep that afloat, too.
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously, you, you, up, up above, you'll see you have the stormwater technician person, and he was the person that we hired through Levex Firm, and, and only works part-time for us. But there, there'll be other opportunities, because we will have two, two potential pending retirements in the next couple of years where that position, or that person could fill any one of them and would have the experience. And then these dollars, which were part of a larger 70,000, because remember, you, you originally okayed 100, these dollars really represented the ability to keep that program going and running as well, you know, starting the testing and starting the, the supplies, kits, the equipping, and so forth, so. So that's really where we arrived upon with this number. Which is about, which is about a half of what they rep, what they were looking for in the first place.
Make your comment. The finance committee approached the budget this year with, keeping in mind things that were essential, and we had talked about a moratorium on this stormwater program. And just to be clear, you have a part-time person employed now that's dedicated to this program only? Or is?
Yes, yep.
And that salary is about, what, 20,000 a year right now?
Uh, if you look above that, Arthur, those lines above it under salary says 25, that, that covers the, the individual in the low twenties, and then it covers a summer helper to be out there, wo- working with them to do the water, because you have to, you have to do test kits, collect samples on every outfall in town.
I understand that. I understand that, and I understand what the program is about and the intention, and we had a conversation at the finance committee about whether or not it'd be appropriate to consider a moratorium on this program for one year because of the uncertainty and extenuating circumstances that we're going to certainly find ourselves in. But beyond that, it sounds to me like we have people employed in it. If we don't approve these, some of these line items here, they won't have anything to do. Is that correct? Is that a correct assessment?
Yeah, you, you would want to make sure they had some level of dollars in resources to perform the functions for which they were hired.
And we never lay anybody off. Just saying. Okay, well, you know, so the facts are on the table. I appreciate your explanation.
I, I think that, you know, we are party to the MS4 permit. I know we're taking down the number from what the requested amount was by a significant amount, and I think we need to, you know, as the chairman said, kind of show that we're still working on this. I, I think a one-year hiatus would not be viewed greatly, especially because we were a year or two late in picking up our activities around this unfunded mandate in the first place. So my inclination is to keep it where it was, where we have it right now, but that's just my opinion.
Again, it was half, about half of what the selectmen approved was about half of what they were looking for in the first place. Plus, the fact is, is that I know none of us like it, but it's just something that we got to do, so. We'll have to go from there.
Okay, we got to try to come to some sort of consensus on this. We've thrown out the figure of 27,200. Either we can go with that, or if somebody wants to throw in another figure, now would be the time to do it.
Zero.
We have a zero offered.
Really?
I think the select board is, even though we'd like to say that, Art, I, I, I'm going to disagree. Mr. Mowgli?
I, respectfully as well, I think we, we, we've taken it down from what they requested and what, what that program needs to, to do everything that's in the MS4, which we know we can't do given the budget pressure, so the, the 27 grand is about the right number.
Mr. GD?
Never say never, right?
You put 24,000 in for testing and sampling. That's the only thing essentially that they're going to be involved with. So I think we have to fund that, the 27,000 funds for, and we're not sure if they're going to use all of that, but that completes that budget.
Well, there also, the other part of that was that, that the way I looked at it was the 27 was the testing and traveling, and they're also a member of a collaborative that are grouped together for other communities. One is a legal entity to go, and they've actually brought suit against some of the con- conditions of the MS4, and so we're a member of that collaborative or whatever it's called.
We're a party to a lawsuit that's trying to get a reduction in the administrative burden.
And we're also trying to get the group to look at doing things on a regional approach, maybe shared people, shared equipment, whatever.
My point is, if we're going to have two guys or two individuals working this next year, the 24,000 is the estimate for testing and sampling. $3,000 doesn't leave a lot for incidentals, I'm fine with the 27,000, and you all know my feeling on this project.
Any other discussion? Then we will leave it at the 27,200.
Are we leaving it up to Randy to decide where he wants to use that 27,200, or is there specific lines?
I would, personally, I would, just very similar to what we did with Chief Bishop, is I, I would designate 24 of the 27,200, is it 27,200? Yeah, 27,200, to, to go to testing, and the other 32,000 would be discretionary.
So agreeable to everybody? Looks good. All right, we're going on to page 16.
The cemetery salary.
Looks like we bought the $15 an hour story. Is that correct?
Well, right now, we currently have some individuals there that in addition to doing the mowing, they're also doing the repair of the equipment, which is saving us a considerable amount of money.
And you're going to be there within two years with minimum wage.
Right.
Oh, okay. Literally are, yeah. It's all 75 now, and it's going to go up 75 cents January 1st.
Right, 1350 January.
Get a raise, I'm happy about it, but.
It's good to be ahead of the curve.
Now, those three guys there, they take that junk, I mean, that nice equipment we have down there at the cemetery, and they really have been able to make that stuff work. You should stop by and see them sometime. They're, they're good guys and they work hard. I don't think the cemetery's ever looked any better. You know, I don't visit it much, but.
I thought you could only schedule one appointment there.
Well, you're scheduled. You're scheduled. Would you like another date and time, sir?
I think I have a reservation.
Yes, you do.
Comments because.
I think it's next Thursday at 3:00.
All right, knock it off, let's go, come on.
All right, everybody agree?
Yep.
Okay.
But they did get their CPC article passed to go to town meeting for that grave GPS thing.
Right.
Great.
The line below it.
That's good.
All right. On to page 17. The first thing that jumps out is the addition to the cemetery building. We wanted to put it on hold.
So in your opinion, it's not critical?
In, in my opinion, we could do temporary things if need be. They were looking for additional place, storage space for their equipment. If we had to, I know it's, it's not the best solution, but we even have some sheds that we're trying to get rid of behind the police department. We could temporarily let them use one of those sheds.
When it was explained to us, it wasn't about storing equipment. I thought it was actually.
Yeah. Bold storage.
Well, yeah, exactly. I thought you said nicely. Which is it?
Does the floor shop have any extra space?
I think what they were hoping to do is if they got the addition, they could move their equipment over, have more room for their equipment to work on it and store it, and it would probably, yeah, give them additional storage for bodies if the need came, if there was a need in the future, but I don't think it was a case of where they really needed immediate storage for winter.
If it's equipment, I'm all for getting rid of it.
Well, I, I'm just saying, we, we thought we, we could hold off on this. Well, I, I'm just saying, we, we thought we, we could hold off on this and, and see how things shape out next year.
And with the funding they have coming their way, there's a lot of work that'll be going on there next, next summer between the walls and everything else. I think we can wait one more season. There'll be plenty of action going on.
I'm fine with postponing that for a year.
Okay.
Yep.
Everybody else? Okay. There are no objections? Who voted B?
All right. I don't see anything else unless somebody sees something.
There's a difference in the nurse salary.
What salary?
The nurse salary under the Board of Health. We said, I guess we said 2,000 and you said 1,000. It's not highlighted in blue or red.
Okay.
And that was, I think that was because there was a reserve fund transfer this year to, to add to that line item. So we try, I think the thought was to put that money in the budget this year based on what we expect the expense to be, correct?
Um, well, in addition to that, Laura, what, I think the board has, has accepted two grants that of dollar amounts that came through the Regional Planning Agency PVC for the nurse position, which of course, as, as you had always said, that if we needed more monies during time of emergency, you would do it on reserve. So we have not really had to do that at this point in time because I believe we got 7,000 or 8,000 the first time and 7,000 or 8,000 the second time. So received probably 14,000 to 16,000 in the last five weeks to be paying for the nurse. Does that sound right, Laura and Mel on the payrolls?
Just looking to see if I could find the folder real quick.
Sounds like maybe. Those were grant dollars, you know?
Yeah.
Sounds like maybe a suggestion to cut it to zero.
Well, we still, the, the thing about it is the town nurse, as a general rule, still has other things they have to do in the community that are non-COVID related.
Oh, the, the grant money was COVID?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can we move on? We've agreed on 1,000?
Yep. Yep.
Anything else, Laura?
Sorry. Nope, that's it. Um, 7, 17.
Run 18.
Library maintenance.
Library maintenance is the first one.
It's the same issue we had with the other buildings. We weren't quite clear on the timetable and the urgency of these tie and bond suggestions. That's what those are, right?
Uh, well, let's know, you, you actually, top, Arthur, under the purple, the right-hand column, where we have a, a number that's in purple or lavender, that's 14,790. Your number of 11, comma, 057. And I think the reason why we had done that was when they were going up to 90 on the informational materials and we had to obviously meet some level of a standard of spending. Uh, we felt, because we had already done two finance committee reserve requests. The building's over 20 years old and stuff is starting to happen that we just wanted to have a frank discussion about making sure the resources were put into that type of a line item to address those issues first and foremost. And, um, and then that allowed us not to have to deal with the, uh, the tie and bond things that you tabled and the ones that we zeroed out for now.
You, you took it from the informational material.
Right. Cause remember that the department had it at 90,000.
Correct.
So we just level funded that and we just, we took those dollars and moved it up there. But if, if people are just willing to, you know, let it go back to the other 11,057, if anything comes up during the course of the year that we start to trend where we're going over that number and you support a, a finance committee request process, then that'd be fine. Just, we just want to make sure that these things have, have come about and we're just recognizing them as a point of discussion.
Um, you might too, that on the library operations, finance committee went with level funded and the select board went with their requested amount.
The difference of a thousand dollars, right?
Well, they're all, so we gotta look at everything. Right.
The discussion that we had was that, um, we, we understand there's a certain percentage they have to have to, to get whatever benefits from CW Mars, but we, we're hoping that they could put in for a request for hardship, given the COVID year and the, and the town budgets and all that. So we, that's kind of where we were at top. That was what our discussion was about.
We should, we should put it at the 11,000, 057 number. Life would not be the same without two or three, uh, requests for additional money coming from the library. So let's put it down to the number and if they need more later, we just have to come up with some.
Okay, if that's what you want.
Is that good with everybody?
Yep. Level funded, not as requested. And, uh, at least maybe some recommendation to the library that they make a request to the state asking for a waiver.
But I don't think this is included in those, in those calculations from the state or from that entity there that they, that they, you know, talk about.
All right, the maintenance contracts, we have a difference. You want to leave that at the
Sorry. So we're leaving the library maintenance at the 11,057?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that whole column, right?
The whole column's going to be level funded?
Right, that's the way I read.
Okay. Everybody in agreement?
Yes.
Yeah.
And we're level.
Okay.
Is that it for eighteen?
Uh, yeah, because the other is just the, where you tabled things, but, uh.
That's fine. We, I, I would go along with you on that because.
Rest were tabled, we tabled and you zeroed except for the last one, which was.
The lifeguards.
Paper lifeguards.
All right.
And that was it. Expected pay increase. You know, minimum wage is going up, lifeguards make more money. It's getting tougher and tougher to get lifeguards.
And I would imagine if, if you, if you're going to have a, a summer, there's going to be a lot of people going out to the beach. And as long as there's no algae blooms, it's going to be open more hours and more days.
If Six Flags doesn't open, it won't be hard to find lifeguards. Just saying.
Good point.
I mean, I don't even know if the beach will be, if we'll be opening public places like that.
Do we want to put some amount in there?
I mean, it's not a lot of money. It's just a, it's just, we actually, when it came to salaries, we kind of tabled it to discuss with you guys because that's your purview.
Okay. You're right. But if we don't use it, it'll still be there and, uh, but at least we have a mound in there to cover it if we are. Is that okay?
That's fine.
It can only be used for lifeguards though, right?
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, going to page 19.
Nothing.
I don't think, see anything? Am I missing anything? All right, page 20.
Agricultural committee, $500 supplies.
They probably need something.
I'm okay with that.
Yep. Everybody's okay with that? This is their first budget?
Mr. Chairman? Yes. Just to clarify, uh, back up on the channel 15, uh, requests for 15,000 and 25,000. Those are coming out of the Comcast money that the town has an account. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, Arthur. Um, the town has been accruing a very reasonable uh, amount of dollars in that account thanks to the last contract that was negotiated by Bob Horacek.
You're so charming. I just can't.
Did a hell of a job.
Carl, what, what do we, what do we, you just, as a point of clarification for everybody, what, what is the tax that, I know we have zero to 3%, what are we at now?
I can't, I'd have to go look the contract. I, I think it was one of those things where it graduated after a period of time. And, and, and I know we are cutting up for renewal again, and I know you would like some of your other members of your committee to, to maybe join that cable committee.
Everybody in town should be on the committee once in their life. Absolutely.
There's a surcharge, Mr. Chairman, not a tax.
Correct. That's correct.
Sorry.
I think it's 3% now, isn't it?
Um, I wouldn't want to pass because, because again, there's, there's certain, there's a formula there that was worked out by the committee uh, with the attorney about, so it'd be a base amount and then other dollars coming in by subscribers and the income they get, then that might give another number like, at one time it was like 0.75 and so forth. So.
I think we were at 0.75 and I think we've gone in the first year to one and maybe one and a quarter, one and a half over the, the three years terms, or no, it was a five-year contract.
So five-year deal. And what happens is we're now in the third year into it because when you're, when you're three years of the expiration date, you're, um, they give you notice and you legally can start negotiating if you want. So they have already sent us that notification letter.
All right, I think we've beaten this horse dead.
That's fine. Move on.
Move on. 21. Nothing?
21, um, we wanted to add an additional $10,000 into the health, dental, retirement and unemployment line to cover, um, the payout, um, for the police chief's retirement at the end of June.
Next June, not this June.
Yeah, next June.
Right, because he, he, he did, uh, he has, uh, mentioned to me that, that's under his contract, that's his last day and he is not seeking a contract extension with the board. And there'll be another police chief process there.
And it was.
All right. Anybody have a problem with adding 10,000 to that?
No.
It's 25,000, sorry.
25,000.
Do I hear 30?
Can't do math.
What line item are you talking about?
Uh, 5, 0, 600.
47, 70.
Health, dental, retirement, unemployment?
Yeah, that goes under the retirement.
So what are we looking to change it to?
To the 707020.
707020.
Everybody all set?
Yep, I have no issues.
All right, then we're going to 22. I don't see anything. Does anybody see anything? We're going to 23.
Uh, on 23, um, Laura and I have been, um, given the impression, hello?
Yep.
Laura and I were given the impression by Randy and that he was going to withdraw the transmission main relining number of 575. So that gets taken off of this document and it also can be taken off of the, um, uh, discussion later on for a potential bond.
Okay. Is there anything else on 23?
I don't see anything.
All right. We're going to 24.
On page 24, the, the Board of Selectmen, as sewer commissioners, uh, elected not to go forward with the Prifty Park pump station upgrade. That's why you'll see the FinCon column still said the 340 value and the column says the zero value.
Okay, so I have no problem removing the 340.
And then.
Anybody else need issues?
Is that just seen as not necessary this year?
Right, right. It is not an emergency.
All right, I don't see anything others. So we're going to page 25. I see increase in dispatch training. You tabled it. We put in 500.
Okay.
I believe the chief put that in there because we are required by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to do the appropriate, what's called emergency medical dispatch training, EMD training. So even though the police chief has certain training requirements of dispatches, so does the fire chief and the deputy fire chiefs. Part of the dollars that accommodate that effort.
Any problem for the 500?
No, sir.
No.
Increase in overtime, we put in 5,000.
Okay.
Uh, we do have the chief on this conference call, so if you want, Doug could recognize him. He's muted. And he could speak to that issue if you would like.
Chief Anderson, would you like to speak to this issue?
I don't think he's actually there. Chief?
All right, okay.
I have no issues with this personally, Russ.
All right.
Chief, don't sell past the close.
Again, I think this was a salary thing and we decided to see what you guys thought on that.
Okay. So we agree on the 5,000?
Yep, fine.
And I think everybody understands the ALS equipment stock for the ambulance. Uh, we've used some of the monies that were donated.
Correct. We, we were able, it was a 55,000, so we're able to use some of his existing money and some, I believe, generous donation from the Brown family made as a memorial donation. And then I believe the chief was also talking to the Fireman's Association. So he was able to get that number down to this amount, um, to secure the equipment, get it in place and do a three-year lease to purchase. And, and by doing this 28 payment, that's going to allow us to pay that off right away so that we can, um, resolve that issue and equip the ambulance for a full ALS second ambulance in town.
Yep, we voted for that.
Yep.
Okay, so it appears that we have reconciled that part of the budget. And now we're going to talk about the bonding issues. And the first one, of course, is what we feel is the most important one. And that is the bonding issue for the choir station. Mr. Steinhardt, you want to just give us a quick rundown? I think we are all aware of it, but just for the record.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chairman, at a, uh, previous work that the board had, I was instructed to go ahead and get debt service, uh, dollar amounts. And, and this relates to the, uh, project which went out to bid. Which is being recommended as acceptable by the design firm, Russo Bar. Arthur was the designee for the finance committee sitting through those meetings with that entity. And the 929 is the number, it doesn't within itself include a clerk of the works, which you're, both boards would want to make sure we had, and it doesn't include a contingency. Separate from that, the original $300,000 bond we did last year for the design and permitting, that's included. It has enough dollars in that to do the construction oversight by the architectural firm. The project was already put out to bid, that cost 10,000. You had, you got seven to nine bids. Very advantageous, and now it's a matter of deciding if you want to act on that to resolve the leaks that still continue to happen at the building and to, you know, get everything done and be good for another 30 years. And I did give everybody the bond schedule documents.
Think you got a bond schedule for 1 million, 1.1 and 1.2? Everybody have it?
Correct, right, we did that so that you'd be able to determine, you know, if you were going to go forward with this, what you would want me to have bond council draft a borrowing order for. You know, because that would have to go on the warrant. So 929, that's just your base number. You know, you have to figure out what you want to have in there for, again, for contingency in terms of a number of percent. And then what you'd want for a clerk of the works.
Clerk of the works.
What would be your recommendation, Carl?
I would want to speak to the, our building inspector about that and the fire chief before a guess, but I would imagine that it's, you know, I don't think the million would probably be enough, but so I'm thinking maybe the one, the 1.1, but I would want to confer with those two gentlemen first.
Good. Bob, you know the position of the select board, does the finance committee have a position on the fire station?
We need to do the project.
Okay.
So it's just a question of, you know, what's the best deal as far as the bonding issue? We're at 925, I'm having a little trouble finding it. No, I've got it. I'm just having trouble finding the 925 listed.
Well, you're not going to find, that was the bidder, that was the actual bid documents tabulation. What you have in front of you, Bob, would be debt service schedules for 1 million, it should say 1M, 1.1M and then 1.2.
Okay.
Like right here, Bob, see this?
Oh, that's what I'm looking at, yep.
Yeah. So.
So Carl?
Yeah.
On other projects, what do we, what do we see for contingency fees? 10%, 15%, 5%?
Oh, I don't, I think the larger, I think you might be.
I know tiny bond came out with some astronomical numbers on their assessment of our buildings, but.
Yeah, that's why, Arthur, you know, if you're, if you did something like 10%, you're at, say you're at 929, you did 10%, that'd be what, 92,000? And that would get you up over the, you know, over the million, and then clerk of the works for another 30 to 40,000, because this job's going to go pretty quick. It's probably going to be, you know, six to 10 weeks total.
So Carl, there's, this is a 20-year bond?
Ah, yes, sir. Yep.
Okay, so there's really no negotiations that we're looking at here anyway. You know, we're not looking at a 10-year, 15-year, 20, 25-year, we've settled on 20-year bonds.
Right.
Okay.
Well, I mean, if you wanted, you know, if you wanted me to have bond, my financial advisor run 15-year notes, we could do that, but I don't think more than 20 would be something that they'd be comfortable with on these types of projects. Because it's not like a water line or sewer line, which would go 25 or 30 years.
Okay.
Is everybody comfortable with the 1.1 million?
Yes.
That's the way the numbers are pointing right now.
Yeah, that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we have pretty much consensus that we feel this project needs to be recommended to the voters of the town of Southwick. If we give Carl the leeway to start working on the 1.1 million bond issue for 20 years, we can start drafting up the articles for the town meeting.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman, a bond council would, would develop that document.
Everybody comfortable with that? I see people shaking their head, so we're in agreement on that. Okay. The select board also was considering doing another bond issue for the paving of roads. We did, what did we do last year, Carl? 2 million?
Yeah.
For Randy? Okay. I'll give you my opinion, then I'm going to let Mr. Mogle and give his opinion, and then we'll open it up for discussion. I'm, due to the COVID-19 and the fact that we're most likely in a recession, could possibly even go into a depression. There's a lot of unknown things, and the fact that we haven't even paved some of the roads that we put in money for last year yet. I'm of the opinion that we should hold off this year and wait until we have a clearer picture. So that's my opinion. Doug, you want to give your opinion?
I think some of the, the reason we didn't get a lot of the work done last year was because we, we didn't get the money till July and then getting contractors with everyone else being busy. So some of the money did roll over to be done, starting, should be starting now, if it ever stops snowing here in May.
You'll be signing a contract soon for the Fred Jackson Road Culvert.
Right, but there was, you know, the big deal was paving and right, and to try to catch up on the deficit in the paging, paving, so I think that if we take, I don't know that we could take a year off at, you know, I, if we should take a year off because it's just going to put us that much further behind when we can get back to it. You know, maybe we can take the number down. But there needs to be a continued reinvestment in those roads so that we don't end up way behind the eight ball, you know, three years from now. So I'd be more amenable to looking at, say, maybe a million bucks to bond against that, you know, for, on a 15 or 20-year note like we did on the last one, to reflect the life of that asset.
10 years.
There you go.
We only go for 10.
A question? Approximately what percentage of last year's paving budget is still unspent? As of now? In other words, we did part of the paving last fall. How much more of that money, we'd say 1.2 million last year, how much is going to be spent this year, has yet to be spent?
Carl? Carl?
I would ask Mel to look that up in the, the three or four line items that represent those projects.
I mean, the big one that needs to go that we held off was tannery, right? We held it off on purpose because of the construction activity over there, right?
Right, but you had put other year-end monies aside toward that for the future that you just freed up to pay for the Congamon Road overage.
Correct.
So let's just put, let's just take that road out for a minute, there's, I think what, Russ, there's Cedar Street, Fred Jackson Road, Culverts, and then there's two other roads.
Nicholson Hill.
Nicholson Hill.
And Tammy and Jeffrey Circle.
Right, so there's still four.
Plus, plus the sidewalk on Deepa.
Right, so there's still a lot of work out there to be done. That's going to, but again, you know, when Randy's looking at a pavement management report index, you know, the backlog is millions, so you obviously want to keep going. But it's important to note, when you, when you look at that, that road estimate for all that work and it's 17 or 18 million dollars, at that point, you're only $6 million short from the debt exclusion override we did for the $24 million share for the school project, which was, 27 million was all three member communities out of 69 million leveraged from the SBA.
So let's, if we could, I just want to stay on the roads, Carl.
Thank you.
18 million dollar project. It's, we're way behind, that's, that's a given, any, I don't think there's anybody that's objecting to that.
Right.
Russ, I hear what you're saying, whether relative to a lot of unknowns, yes. No, anything's possible, depression for sure, and we probably don't want to go on the hook for that. But we have to ink the contract. So if we don't ink the contract, then we're not on the hook for it. So if we put it in the budget, we don't ink the contract, then we don't spend the money, it goes back, it goes back into the budget. We're, we're way behind because we didn't bond for this, we tried to pay for roads as we always have done, out of operating expenses, and it's a capital expense. You're, you're looking at the price of oil being dropped, that's a big component on the raw material side. We don't know how the contractors are going to be relative to, are they going to be busy doing roads or are they not going to be busy doing roads? And is everybody going to have the same? Are the other cities in town's going to say, hey, you know what, we're going to hold off a year? And we may see bids actually come in much lower. So I think it's important to budget the money and, and look at doing the bonding, and if the bids come in all screwy and they're high and everything else, and the economy falls apart, just don't go all for bid. But I think we really, I think we might be on the winning end of it if, if the raw material costs go down and the contractors are more available and et cetera.
Well, Bob, we're going to, we're going to hear from Melinda in a minute on the numbers that are still available, but when you, you do a bond, you know, and we do the annual bids for this kind of stuff, when you do the bond, you're still going to have to put a certain amount of dollars in the principal and interest line items for the short-term borrow.
Yeah, but if, I get what Bob is saying is, go to town meeting, get the authorization to borrow, get your quotes, if you don't pull the trigger and you don't actually go and execute, you don't have to borrow. We can always go back and, you know, a year from now and either repurpose the money to other roads that we're going to do and keep the projects moving, or rescind the bond authorization altogether and just put it back and not borrow the money. Short-term or long-term if we don't do the projects. But we, these, the money that's left over is not left over, it's money that we've committed to projects that aren't complete. So it doesn't get us any further along the completion unless we say, okay, we're not going to do Jeffrey Circle, we're going to do Woodside Circle. And with the money that we didn't spend on Jeffrey Circle, we're going to put it here. Those roads, there's, the list of roads that needs to be done is way longer than the money we've got allocated, even at a million or 2 million or 5 million, but you know, so I think we're talking about, you know, I think we should continue on the process. And when, as we, as we get into July and August and we get a better feel for where we are with the economy, yep, maybe, you know, Bob's absolutely right. Maybe we can decide that, you know what, Randy, hold off, don't, don't bother bidding these out, or don't bother, we're not going to contract these, appreciate the effort, we're not going to borrow the money and take on the debt. But we, at least we have the authorization to be able to do it if we go to town meeting with it in, in whatever town meeting is due.
All right, Randy was looking for 3 million, Doug's has thrown out the suggestion of 1 million. Any other thoughts?
I think we got to hear from the clerk.
Okay.
Oh, the clerk, yeah, yeah. I'd say 1.5.
That's what I wanted to guess.
Melinda, how much money do we have left?
So, unencumbered, the available money is 557,000, roughly $557,000.
We hit you halfway, Joe, 2.5 million.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Art.
I don't want to get too far down in the weeds, but the, the issue says road projects, and I always thought this was more about paving, but I'm hearing about culverts and.
Drainage.
Yeah, drainage. I don't know, we got so many roads that just need blacktop. I don't know, like you said, who's, who's deciding? How are we prioritizing whether we're going to spend money on a culvert project versus paving a road?
The road commissioners would do that.
Right. I think the reason why we did culverts are, is because money was already expended to do the design work.
Right.
Well, that's why some of them were done. We also got some small bridge grants where we had to put monies towards that too. But the road commissioners seem to be of the idea that we agree with you. The monies, if any monies are available, it should be blacktop.
And we actually sit down after the monies are allocated with Randy, and I'm sure Randy would like to see more culverts done and whatnot. Just because they're, they're to be done, and Russ and Joe and Doug here really push for the blacktop. So we, that's, that's what we've been doing. Those culverts were on the shelf, Art, when you were a selectman. There was three of them when I came on eight years ago, that literally were on the shelf as they call it, and those are the ones that finally finished. I think that was the last one of the three that we're talking about.
Yeah, and that speaks to the issue about, a lot of chapter 90 dollars from the state have been used for design work, so now this is implementing all of that design work. And the, the cost of not having those dollars for that design work meant there was a lot of miles of road that couldn't be paved. And then there was the overage Nicholson Hill and some of the other locations from a previous EPW.
So do these, do these designs have a shelf life, are they going to expire? I know regulations change almost hourly.
You are correct about that, they do, sometimes you have to go back and get additional, especially if it's a state project. I can tell you this, Congamon Road, we ended up doing several amendments with the design firm that ended up costing much more money. We had to, we had to pay them to seek waivers, not put in a second sidewalk. It's arcane, some of the federal regulations that come into play when you're trying to use federal and state dollars to do road improvement projects.
Carl, what was the overage on Congamon Road? Where are we?
Right now, that number's 310. So.
So the town's footing that bill?
Well, we are in a, we're in a discussions and negotiations for a cost sharing process with the Mass Highway Department, the design firm, and then the town is a three-way split somewhere along the line. So that's being facilitated by the chairperson and myself, the public works director in town.
If not, it's going to turn into a protracted legal battle because if we don't come to a speedy conclusion to this. Because the contractors, I've said it before and said it again, the contractor is ridiculous.
All right, let's see if we can't build consensus on this issue in front of us. Mr. Mogle, I mean, Randy would like 3 million, Mr. Mogle threw out 1 million, Mr. Diddy threw out 1.5 million.
I'm going to hedge my bet to 2 million. And then I'm done. And I know it's a lot of money, I get it, but.
Okay, Carl has only run two bond things. One is for 1 million, one is for 1.5 million.
Right, that's how I was asked to do, Mr. Chairman, at the last.
We can infer.
Well, I mean, really, if you just took, if you just took the 10-year one at 1 million and you doubled it.
Double it. You're getting pretty close.
Right.
Triple it, I'm in.
What was that?
Triple that and I'm in.
Me too.
It's better to have that approved than to have to create a special town meeting to finish a road project or something.
Carl, how?
I think it's, we, well, Mr. Heratik, we have a list. I think we, what we did last year was we, we took the money and then we took the projects and then we kind of sorted them by, you know, need, and then we did the dollars, and at the end, you know, we, we figured out which ones we could get done and which ones we'd have to defer. And, and, and so then this would be the next set from that list as we work down depending on the dollars.
And we had chapter 90 money to it.
Correct, to make it done. So it, it wouldn't be, you would just leave whole projects off the list if. If you did a million, million and a half, two, two and a half, whatever. It's just where you, how you work that list of projects.
Right, but you, you just need to understand that, you know, Bond Council will word it up. We will have to make sure that we put in the principal and interest line items. If you're talking two million, would be putting in $230,000 in those line items. And, you know, you just remember, at the end of the day, your free cashing isn't as large as it was last year. So as long as you understand, your tax rate will be the thing that is affected by this.
That's fine.
I understand.
I, I honestly think it's one of the things people around town complain the most about. The roads are a mess and they need to be done. I, I just think it needs to, we need to go for it.
Okay, so what's, what is the, so that's what the two million was about, 230,000? If we took the one million amortization schedule. So are we at two million or are we at three? And are we going up to 345?
I'm with the mass cow.
You're at two million?
You're at two? Move, move.
I'm in.
Two, two million.
I'll go to two as well. It's what we did last year. It seemed to, you know, if we can finish the projects from last year, plus the Congamon disaster, and then get going on the projects this year, I think that'll work.
All right, I think we have consensus at two million. Is there anyone opposed to that?
Nope, I'm good. I still think we're going to see a lot of pricing down.
I think, well, you know, the oil was free for a little bit. So yeah, it's still cheap. And hope, and that is the biggest component, right? Especially of, you know, paving projects. Yeah, right, you're absolutely right.
But I, I highly doubt if the price is going to come down since we only have one individual, actually one firm now that does this whole area.
Yeah, this, there's only, well, there's basically two, but you're right, Russ, there's a lot less competition now, Joe.
But nature abhors a vacuum like that too, because it's going to pull people in, I think, eventually. Maybe not for this season. I, I, I know your point, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay, and the, and the waterline transmission project was withdrew, so we're done with that item.
All right. What else do we have, Mr. Steinhardt?
Well, it's just for us to understand that, like, like we do each time we have one of these reconciliation meetings that Accounting Department is, is working on the housekeeping year-end transfers for some wage accounts. We're talking small dollars in the 50 to 60 range. We also, we also have to include within that the additional monies from your budget where you gave a FinCom reserve for the Police Department and dispatch. So we got to add that in there too. We have the snow and ice deficit of 130,000. The annual contribution to the OPEB, which is our other post-employment benefits trust fund. That's something that the bond agencies look at. So you have those things to finish off the year in the special. And then you have your annual town meeting warrant. You've just gone over the bond issues. You've gone over the budget. The Community Preservation Committee is in the process of putting forward their normal housekeeping articles. We are in the process of working with Laura's office on the annual alum treatment bond repayment, which will be around 70,000 in terms of what that note looks like. And then there's a whole host of other items in cash for the old cemetery restoration stones, vaults, tree cutting, and then some of the stuff at the new cemetery. So you're going to see those. A Revere Road petition came in to do very much the same thing we did for Robin Road. So Town Council's working on several articles that relate to that. That's in the 30,000. And then there's the school assessment, which I believe is what, 113,000? The school cap budget. And then the acceptance of the Mass Department of Revenue's quarterly billing acceptance so that we can do that at a future date, which would, you know, we're not going to be able to vote on that in, on June 16th and start it on July 1st for fiscal year 21. So that ends up being done in fiscal year 22. And that's the way that warrant article would be worded. So that's, that's the substantial items that are on the annual town meeting warrant.
I have one question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Coming out of the CPC meeting last week, we had had a joint work session with five or six boards coming out of the Open Space Committee report that was done over the last six or eight months, of which you were a key member of that subcommittee. And the CPC did not, elected not to fund the signage that's, that is needed and was requested by multiple departments. And it was a big public feedback issue, and especially in light of the current environment where we are encouraging people to get out and use some recreation at a distance. I'm wondering if we can find it in our heart or in our, in our budget, if you will, to, to set aside maybe 10 grand to fund that endeavor since it was defeated at the CPC. The other articles that we had referred to CPC to propose for funding were passed, like the cemetery, the ag signs, a bunch of others. But I think that, that was a very loud feedback from the community and from that committee that those signs are needed. And I just think CPC missed the point. And it's not going to be on the town meeting article, town meeting this year, which would mean it'd have to wait at least another year to go back. So I'm, I'm wondering if we should either, if we could put forth a warrant article for either the special or the annual to fund that.
What signs are these?
This was for, it was a, to have consistent signage at all of the town-owned recreational properties. Sofenowski, North Pond, you name it. We don't have the, the rules, the regulations and what's, and what's where. And it was coupled with a website thing that they were working on, that they are doing. That points out to people on the website where all these places are. We spent millions of dollars, literally millions of dollars, acquiring and maintaining these places. And a lot of people in town don't even know we have them. And so one of the, they had this open space report, which is required for us to have, which we just expended another many thousands of dollars preparing. And one of the findings from that open space report was to have these signs so, and, and the website so that people know where they are and, you know, where to go and then what the rules of the road are there. There was an application to CPC that I, I thought it didn't quite get a fair shake, so.
Why did they?
You know what? I don't want to get into the politics of all of it. But it was, it wasn't good. And so my, my recommendation is, you know, we've had a lot of stuff that we've sent to CPC that, that pot, you know, would have come out of budget items in other years that we utilize CPC funding for. So this one's kind of ass backwards, if you will. I'm proposing that we put forth a warrant article to fund those signs. At even, less than what they had put in, but maybe a 10 grand to get, I think it could be done for that and, and get it on the special or the annual and get it done.
Well, Doug, if, if you like, we could under the operations, Laura's going to have a warrant article for the snow and ice deficit as an, as an operations warrant article. We certainly could just put it as a line item within the same article and say, open space signage.
In bold, thank you. That's my motion. If, if I'm allowed, I don't, is this a meeting that I can make a motion for that?
No.
Okay, well, then I'm proposing it and nodding my head.
Any other discussion on that?
Yeah, you got to include some more money for vandalism and then cameras, Doug.
We're going to take the cameras from the lakes, the old ones that they generate every year with new ones. So we'll take the old ones. But if you don't mind, Doug.
There you go.
Give me the amount of signs we need, Carl, and give me a goddamn week to get you a real number. Because part of the problem we have, Doug.
You're right.
We just pulled a number out of the goddamn sky. Oh, 10 grand works and, and that's BS. So give me a week, tell me how many signs you need, and I'll get you a goddamn quote that works. And then we'll go back, maybe it's 9,500, maybe it's 5,000. I, I don't know, but this is crazy.
But I want to carry, so, so let's carry that article, at least slot that, Laura, create a line in the, in the budget if approval of the, you know, the other selectmen and the finance committee. But, and get it on the special and, you know, maybe we can chase Dennis Clark to actually get the numbers that he was supposed to get to Chairman Fox so that he could make an adequate presentation to CPC. Because he was, he was the biggest proponent of that in the first place. And then, well, like I said, I don't want to get into the politics of this.
Right, I believe he now has those figures, Doug.
Well, get him to Joe so he can get the, what did he say? The goddamn price.
Oh, no, he said certified numbers. I heard.
Part of the problem, Joe, was there's going to be different rules on different signs. And we're waiting to work that out with different boards and commissions. So the cost might, it might freeze because the signs will be different.
Yeah, but verbiage is verbiage. That, that's all part of the sign itself, so who cares? It's the size of the sign and how much it costs. What you put on is what you put on. We don't pay by the penny per letter. I got a good sign guy, but Russ, you would have to be in charge of the permits for the signs. Apparently I do that a lot.
So anyway, I didn't mean to take away, I didn't mean to take half an hour on 10 grand. But I, it's something that I think came out of that. We had a, you know, every parking rec conservation, you know, we're all at that. And Planning Board and everyone else that was on that subcommittee came to a, a work session with the Board of Selectmen. We all thought it a great idea to go to CPC and do it, and then CPC shredded them up. So let's, we need to get those done.
I will follow up with Dennis tomorrow for those firm numbers with Joe.
Thank you.
Finance committee have any thoughts or problems?
Mr. Mogul, without getting into the politics, was there any particular reasons that were given why this couldn't happen?
Probably because they didn't have a real goddamn quote, because they pulled the number out of the goddamn sky. That's probably why you had no paperwork to say, here's the price, here it is. Okay, let's do it. No, it was a price out of the goddamn sky.
It was an estimate, it was an estimate. And if it had come in less, they would have, you know, they would have been able to take the money back. But they weren't comfortable with that for, for this particular project. For other projects, we've written open-ended checks to go and do stuff and, you know, whatever. So that's why I said I don't want to get into the politics of it. And so let's just, we're not going to have another shot at CPC with this for, you know, who knows when they're going to meet next. So I, I'm proposing we take this route, get this done. It was a priority item out of the open space report. And, and there was, you know, there's many boards and commissions. This was, that, it was supposed to have been done so that, that there was a better number and it just wasn't ready in time for the CPC.
Two quick questions. Are they, are, are the signs, you have the same rules and regulations?
Yes, but customize if there's some other subtleties for each, each piece. So they're not 25 identical signs, right?
No, they're not.
Like, you know, you don't have the no swimming one at, you know, Wally Park, but you know what I mean?
We got that at the retention basin on Congamon Road already.
That says no fishing.
Oh, I thought it said no swimming. Oh, all right.
Got to slow down on Congamon so you can read the sign.
Okay, so we have consensus on this?
I, I, I would, I would propose that we do some temporary signs and, and, and let them do their things this year and come put what they want on their signs before we move headlong into this.
We have that now, I think, is what Joe said, right? Or somebody said that they had that done now.
The person done.
We need a concrete proposal with certified numbers like the mass cow suggested. I, seriously.
We'll have that, but I'm proposing that.
You can't come to the, the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen with a, a project that you don't have any research done on it. I mean, it's not the biggest project in the world, I get it. It's a reasonable request, but bring some numbers when, you know.
I will talk to Dennis tomorrow about getting receipt of those numbers.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So that really talks about all the highlights of both the special and the annual warrants. And that was other items. Are there any other items people are thinking about? I mean, you know, you see what the warrants look like every year. They're pretty much the same formats, same process. And it's just us relying upon our professionals in the accounting department to finish off. Anything else that needs to be?
Did the schools reduce their requests for capital?
Yes, they're, actually, they, and I think part of that might have been part of the restructuring of their transportation services. So they, they would usually do a $500,000 vote each year. And I think their request this year is 175.
Okay, because at the meeting, I believe it was like 385. So it came down from that? And like, did it come down from what she originally proposed to us in March?
I know both their assessment came down and I believe subsequent to that, their, what they were going to need to spend their capital dollars on came down. I can send you all copies of the warrant articles that they submitted. But I think you're going to see it's 175, which is down from 500.
Okay. Because new bleachers at this time is not imperative. That was my point, because her original proposal included new bleachers in the gym. You know, so it's stuff like that. If we're guiding the capital budget for the rest of the town, we just got to make sure what she's proposing is really necessary.
Yeah, I, I will have Robbins send the warrant article that had the listing of all of the items that they were requesting.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
All right, let me get back to something that Mr. Didi mentioned about cutting 5%. I don't know if we need to do that now, but I think we all are aware that we've done this in the past. And if we see a situation, there's nothing to say that we couldn't institute another freeze of different things in the fall or the winter if we see things going in the wrong direction because of the COVID-19.
And we have a freeze right now going.
So, Mr. Didi, are you happy with that?
Mr. Fox, I'm never happy.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Didi. You can mute yourself again, yeah, thank you. All right, Mr. Steinhardt, anything else?
No, I believe we've covered everything that's on the, the agenda. Laura and Mel, is there anything that you think we need to address before we conclude these proceedings?
No, not at the moment.
Okay.
Mr. Heratik, anything you'd like to add at this time?
No, the only question I had was, I noticed, Mr. Chairman, that you had the Pledge of Allegiance scheduled on your agenda today. And I don't know, we don't normally do the Pledge of Allegiance on the, on the Finance Committee. But have you been following this in your meetings?
We have been doing this in our regular meetings. This is a work session, so I did not do it. But, but this is something that we are going to be doing at our regular meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Comment? I'd like to take a minute to thank Mr. Mogul for coordinating all these remote meetings and doing a great job helping people out and really putting things together for all of us that really didn't have a clue in the beginning.
Yeah.
Fantastic job.
Are we going to get into indoors or outdoors for town meeting? Or we're going to wait, let that process play out?
I, I believe, Joe, that's going to be part of your discussion with, with Jim Putnam, myself and the town clerk, because Russ designated you to do that.
Did you get the license plate of that?
Delegate, delegate, always remember that word.
We did, Jim did want us to order covers for microphones. So that they're disposable. Every time someone speaks, there'll be a new cover on it.
All right, if there's nothing else, I think we will be adjourning this work session. I thank everybody for all their hard work and effort. I know we've put in a lot of hours over the past several months. And hopefully, when we get to town meeting, people will appreciate it and support us. With that.
And I concur. So thanks.
There's going to be separate, there has to be separate motions by the Select Board and a roll call vote to adjourn, and by the FinCom members, motion and second.
Okay, so the Select Board. Okay, so the select board, a motion to adjourn.
Doug Mogul will make a motion to adjourn.
Joe Didi, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, yes.
Doug Mogul, yes.
Joe Didi, yes.
We are adjourned. Okay, Bob?
Okay, I'm sorry, motion to adjourn.
Bob, do we need to schedule another meeting before we do that, or no?
We could do that. You're absolutely right, Sheila. We have to do some pros and cons on articles.
Right.
Carl?
Yeah.
When's the last point, when do you need pros and cons by?
Well, I, you know, I would think you would want to have those posted. Let's think, we're going to probably sign and post the warrant after Memorial Day, so that's going to be somewhere around the 28th or 29th that'll be posted. So, I mean, obviously, if you're board and Laura, you could probably give them everything by the first week in June.
Robin's email said she needs it by June 2nd. She's to post it by June 2nd.
That's good. That comes out about right.
Right, and the other thing we'll need from the Finance Committee is what's the little letter that you write up for the budget book?
Yeah.
So that will have to be done.
So we could probably do all that in one more meeting, right?
I think so, Sheila. We could, we could, we could let it go until June 1st. That way.
I don't, our letter, I don't think we can go that far out, because we have to print the books.
Okay. So.
Next week?
When do we have a draft warrant? The warrant?
A draft warrant.
The warrant's going to be finalized by Selectmen the end of May, so we can give you a copy. You want to see what their warrant looks like before they sign it?
Well, if you have to comment on it, we need to.
We have to do pros and cons.
Oh, yeah, but you, sometimes those are usually done on the posted warrant after they've signed it. You're saying a draft of the warrant. Are you talking about the finished warrant, or a copy of the draft?
Obviously, a finished, final, signed warrant is more ideal, but we could probably operate off a draft.
Okay, I would say probably Memorial Day week, right in there, Arthur. So that'll be about a week, probably about a week before your meeting.
Okay, so the 25th is a holiday, so.
Yep.
The 26th.
I'm okay.
No, well, I'm thinking, Carl, when do we, we have to have the booklets done for the 9th?
Yes, the booklets and the town have to be available for distribution at the town elections. So that's going to be June 9th.
All right. Yeah, it'd have to be the latest, you know, it has to be early on the week of May 26, so that we can finish it up and get it to the printers to print the booklets, so that we have them back.
Okay, is the 26th work for you, Laura? If we do all of our pros and cons and our.
The 26th would, would work.
Okay. Carrie, is that okay for you?
That's fine with me, 5:30?
Yeah, 5:30, I think it's going to work. Karen?
That sounds good.
All right, Arthur?
Yep.
Okay, good for me and Sheila, you said it was good. So next meeting is the 26th. Motion to adjourn?
It's moved.
Who's making the motion, Sheila?
Sheila.
Okay.
Second, Art, second.
All right, Pennell, second, okay. And then off you a roll call. I noticed Mr. Mish is no longer with the group, so I can't include him on the roll call vote.
Right.
Okay.
That would be correct. Okay, Sheila?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that's 5:00.